Well, good evening Cedar Falls and welcome to our regular city council meeting for Monday, November 15th, 2021. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Harding?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have approval or motion to approve the regular meeting of November 1st, 2021?
So moved.
Seconded.
So motion and seconded? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have two proclamations to read tonight, so I'll go forward for that. Kim Bayer is the Director of Community Main Street and I have two proclamations which affect Community Main Street tonight. The first is Holiday Hoopla Day for November 26th, 2021. Whereas Cedar Falls is celebrating its 13th holiday season in the Holiday Hoopla tradition with the arrival of Santa Claus and his many helpers the Friday after Thanksgiving. And whereas for more than a decade, Community Main Street volunteers, sponsors, and downtown area business owners have spent countless hours and a true labor of love to bring the magic of Christmas to life through decorations, displays, special holiday events, and Santa's workshop. And whereas the Holiday Hoopla kickoff returns in 2021 with an exciting new venue, the River Place Plaza on the corner of Second and State Streets and will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. the evening of Friday, November 26th. And whereas the Holiday Hoopla kickoff promises the joy and laughter and spirit we've come to know and love, the arrival of Santa Claus, hopefully, and a fabulous holiday fireworks display that will thrill attendees, young and old, even those with hearts two sizes too small. And whereas Holiday Hoopla is a treasured community event and we celebrate all who labor to make our community holiday season a true joy and wonder. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim November 26th, 2021 as Holiday Hoopla Day throughout the city and encourage the citizens of Cedar Falls to join me at the River Place Plaza from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on November 26th as we gather together to celebrate the start of the holiday season. Signed this 9th day of November, 2021. So this is for you.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then I'll have a second one and you have a few words if you like. So the second is for Small Business Saturday, which occurs the day after on November 27th, 2021. And it reads, whereas according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, America's 30.7 million small businesses represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States. And whereas these small businesses responsible for 65% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of America's private sector employees. And whereas surveys show that three-quarters of U.S. consumers are seeking ways to shop small and support their local community and neighbors. And whereas 96% of consumers who shop local on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And whereas across the country, small businesses have suffered severe hardship due to the global coronavirus pandemic and its after-effects, including forced business shutdowns, workforce shortages, and supply chain issues, and now more than ever need the encouragement and support of a loyal customer base. And whereas it is appropriate and fitting for the City of Cedar Falls to support local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday in Cedar Falls and encourage all citizens to patronize our city's many small businesses for a direct positive impact on our local economy and on our many neighbors who own and operate them. Signed this 9th day of November, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green. So this is for you also.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
So I will give you the floor for a few minutes if you'd like to talk about Holiday Hoopla and Small Business Saturday.
Oh, perfect. So starting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., we will be starting to deck the falls in downtown, so if anybody is bored and has a few extra minutes and wants to come help hang garland and lights, we're, that's where we'll be. We are so grateful to you for this proclamation. The day after Thanksgiving has been sacred in my family since Holiday Hoopla started. This will be my sixth Holiday Hoopla as a part of Community Main Street and probably one of my favorite days of the year, so we invite you all to come. We have an amazing committee that puts more hours than I care to count into this event and especially this year with a lot of different new moving parts. So 6:00 to 8:00 on November 26th, and then the next day or all the days leading up to that day to support small. The brick and mortar stores in downtown Cedar Falls are truly the heart and soul of our community and they put a lot into Holiday Hoopla and a lot into just our community in and of itself, so support small shops, small look there first. I know it's super easy to shop online, but they support it every day, so.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
So also, if there are folks who need seats, we do have a few interspersed. You're welcome to come in and join us here. There's one up there and then one off to the side. And as I mentioned, the Civil Air Patrol, we have a proclamation for them for December 1st and I'll read that and have an event online with Civil Air Patrol. They're celebrating their 80th anniversary and also their official chartering of their squadron here in Waterloo, which occurred back in October. So I look forward to celebrating that with them. With that, I'll take us over to public forum where speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone in the gallery who wish to speak in public forum tonight? That's Rosemary. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, peoples. Rosemary Beach, 5018 Sage Road. And this is for your information affair. I don't suspect that anything's going to happen, you're going to do about it. But you may or may not be aware, if you looked in the paper tonight and saw the article on the page by Dr. Connors, Thomas Connors, at UNI, that two of the historic buildings on UNI are in terrible trauma because the regents are looking at tearing them down. Now I realize the university is of its own self, but I was on the Historic Preservation Board. I was Executive Director of the Cedar Falls Historical Society for 13 years. And I think we need to know how important those kind of things are to our city. And I think the other thing we need to know is how the university got here. So if I can get out in the next three minutes, that, how, how we have a university here. We have it because the state of Iowa asked, is there any, any town in Iowa that would take care of the Civil War orphans? And Cedar Falls people said, oh, we will do that. And so we started getting Civil War orphans. And they, they put them in an old hotel down by the railroad track, the American Hotel. And there was a newspaper article in the paper that said, we had so many orphans, they were hanging out of the windows. So they said, what shall we do? And so the people of Cedar Falls said, well, we'll just go three miles south of town and we will build you a great big building. And we will put all those orphans in it. And they did. And they stayed there until orphans do grow up. And so we didn't have enough to take care of a great big three-story building. But that was our first building for the now what is University of Northern Iowa. It was called Iowa State Normal then. And it went from that through all the different name changes. So the university is here because we brought them here through taking care of our Civil War orphans. And I think that with the amount of people in this town that must be graduated from UNI or going to UNI, there should be enough consideration for the history of those two buildings. One is Homer Stierle's home. They built it for him. He was, he was here for years as our president. In fact, he died in that house. And when he retired, well, he lived in it after he retired because he had nowhere else to go. He'd been the president of UNI or of Iowa State Normal School for so long. And he died in that house. And what the university does, which is, I guess we all know about, is eventually they decide that this building isn't really a building we need, so we just won't fix it up. I say that because I remember when old administration went down. And so you just don't fix it up. I remember when Price Slab went down. So they're saying, we can't afford to keep these buildings. That's up to what the university does. But I think the people of Cedar Falls need to be aware that those two buildings are part of our history, a big part of our history. So this is a for you information thing, is that it's so hard to get unless you're on social media. It's very difficult to get some of this news out. So look in last night's or tonight's Courier. And there is a whole story on it of which Tom Connor wrote. And I think that will explain it. And if you get a chance, I guess the president's cottage is open and you can go in. And the multicultural group used it for quite a long time and may still be there. Anyway, look at those buildings. And one of them was, as I say, built for the groundskeeper who was King Cole, and that's across from University Book and Supply. And that was used by the foundation for a long time. So they have been used and they could be used again. And I just hate to see us lose that part of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beach. Does anyone else wish to speak in public forum tonight? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please, sir, and you have five minutes.
My name is James Geiger, 5308 Arbor's Drive. I would just like to thank you guys on behalf of my union brothers and sisters at John Deere for the city's support and all the citizens' support. And hopefully with a little more support, we can win this fight for better wages and retirement for future employees and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. Anyone else wish to speak for public forum? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road, the best city in Iowa, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Okay. My wife, last week, almost ran into somebody walking in the street without any kind of reflectors on. And I don't, you know, I don't know for sure if we've got any rules against walking in the street, but when she told me this, I looked at the side, the sidewalk, and here's a perfectly constructed sidewalk on the right and a perfectly constructed sidewalk on the left. And if she would have had time, she would have got out her little camera and taken, taken a picture of these people, but she didn't have time. So anyway, I strongly encourage citizens of Cedar Falls not to walk in the street. I don't know if it's against the rules, against the law, but if I see it happen, I'm going to take my camera out and I'm going to take a picture of you.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff. From public safety, do you know offhand if that is a municipal infraction to walk in the roadway?
I don't believe it is, no, Mr. Mayor. I'll double check and get back with you tomorrow, but I don't believe it is.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be difficult because somebody has to maybe get to their car or have a reason to be in the street, but certainly building the sidewalks, our complete streets policy is meant to get people off of the roadways, so if you have that available, please take advantage of it for your own safety.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Rogers.
Walking in the travel portion of the road is jaywalking. It's that simple.
Okay. So with that, anyone else wish to speak in public forum tonight?
I should add, I'm sorry, outside a crosswalk, sorry.
Okay. So any, anything else? Do we have anyone from Zoom wishing to speak tonight in public forum?
No one has their hand up.
Okay, so I'm seeing none others in the gallery, so I will close public forum for tonight. Thank you very much for participating. It's good to see you again, Mr. Wykoff. Moving over to Special Order of Business tonight, we have several condemnations here for hearings tonight. And before we begin with that, I'll turn it over again to Mr. Rogers just to give a brief description of the hearing process for tonight and how that's different from a public hearing. So, Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what will help tonight are a series of hearings on condemnation proceedings, which the procedure set forth in the Code of Ordinances. And there's been a committee appointed to review these properties. The report's been submitted to council. And the hearings tonight are the opportunity for the owner or person in possession to present that person's evidence in response to the city's action to take action to abate what the commission has decided is a nuisance, essentially. And so unsafe or unsanitary buildings, unsafe structures are all considered nuisances under the Code of Ordinances. However, the owner or party in possession has the opportunity here to come and explain that person's position on the matter, whether or not it constitutes a nuisance and then possibly an abatement plan that would be considered.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogers. So with this hearing, that tonight, as I said, we have four of them for this evening to go through. And so under oral comments, that's part B in each of the agenda items, we'll have staff comments, a description of the property. And then I will invite the, the property owner or the property owners they designate to come forward and to present evidence of their case to say why that property shouldn't be under condemnation. So with that, they'll take us to item five for the first one. Hearing on proposed condemnation of property located at 1227 West 22nd Street. On this as a point, do we need to have a motion or is this, is the public hearing?
You just need to open the hearing.
Okay, so I'll open that public hearing. And Madam Clerk, do we have written communications filed?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So Jamie Castle, our Building Inspector, will present staff comments first on 1227 West 22nd Street. So Ms. Castle, the floor is yours.
So 1227 West 22nd Street, we had an inspection for this house on October 14th of 2021. The committee included Councilwoman Susan DeBoer, Councilman Mark Miller, Councilman Frank Dara, myself, and Fire Chief John Bostwick. There were others in attendance, but this was the official committee. So a little of the nuisance history on this property. We have had five noxious weeds violations in the last two and a half years. Each one of those have resulted in the city doing the abatement. It was not mowed by the property owner or the, somebody on their behalf. During one of those items, we had contact from a relative from California. We attempted to work with them in the hopes of abating the other nuisances and we got no response. So at that point, we did send a building maintenance on June 18th of 2021 and there was no response to that letter. We did a follow-up letter July 8th, again, no response. At that point, we decided to have the condemnation inspection. Since that time, I wanted to add that officers were called to the property for an open door concern. The officer stated that the home was packed full of debris and vegetative, vegetative growth and they were unsure of the integrity of the stairs. Here are just a few images. All of our inspections for this property happened from the exterior. You can see that the front porch is very damaged. There is a lot of overgrowth and vines actually growing into the home. Some more pictures of that. In the middle, you'll see a door that has been standing open for probably two and a half years. That's damaged. You can also see some potential structural damage to the foundation. From the exterior, it looks like that is of concern, but we would not be able to verify that until we were inside the home. So on this property, what we're recommending is that the city council declares the property a nuisance. Once that is declared, then we'll be able to require abatement of the nuisance. The nuisance must either be abated or a viable plan of action provided to the city by, by 4:00 o'clock on December 2nd. If we don't receive that or it is not a viable plan, at that point, we would request the ability to abate the nuisance with a city contractor. And that's it for that one.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Castle. So with that, is there anyone representing the property who wishes to speak tonight? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please. Yes, please. And, and your relationship with the property?
I'm currently talking to the family members and the lien holders of interest to structure a mutually beneficial deal. So while I'm not speaking on behalf of a family member, I have talked to the family members. The one is a Waterloo resident, Christie Switosh, and California family member that you spoke of, his name's Kevin Price. I'm talking to them as well as Adair Asset Management, who owns the tax sale certificate on the property as they have been paying property taxes for the property for the last two and a half years.
Okay, so.
Do you have a name?
My name is Corbin Hoffman. I live at 1009 West 22nd Street, apartment 44.
Okay. And, and just, just out of curiosity, how, how are you related to this as a family friend or as a professional?
I'm a student at the University of Northern Iowa and I walked by that house on the way to class. And I understand that it is a nuisance property. But I was looking into it because I wanted it to be like, to be able to fix it up and have it be my first home. So I kind of come from a background of construction, so I see the potential in it. And I saw that structural issue that you took a picture of and I don't know if we can tell that there's a big structure issue until we actually get inside of it.
And sir, because you're not listed as a representative of the property, I'm, I'm not able to have you speak as an authority figure for that property. I apologize. Certainly would, would love to take that information in, but for the rules tonight, unless council wishes to waive that, I was expecting we'd only hear from people who were legally responsible for the property itself. Otherwise, we could get lots of people saying, oh, yes, I'm interested in the property as well. Neighbors, people interested in purchasing it. And I didn't, didn't think we wanted to go down that road. So if council's okay with that view of limiting it just to property, the actual legal property representative, I'll continue with that. Any concerns? Okay. So with that, I would certainly welcome your interest in the property. And it certainly sounds like a fantastic idea to try to take it and repair it, but you just wouldn't be able to speak for the property owners, if that makes sense.
Right. If I may ask one question, if I were able to talk to the family members that I've been speaking to and get the authority from them to speak on behalf of the property, would I be able to contact the city to get like the abatement process started before December 2nd?
Mr. Rogers, does that sound acceptable legally?
Any person can submit information on the property, but not at this hearing. So if you have, folks have information, submit for staff to consider, that's fine, but that's going to be independent of council's action tonight.
Yes, sir.
But certainly if you would like to take on that responsibility and basically be the spokesperson for the, the family, if they would welcome that, certainly we would too then.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your interest in coming in. So if we don't have somebody legally able to speak for that property, 1227 West 22nd Street, then I will consider the, the hearing closed and bring us over to council, which part C is a resolution declaring the property located at 1227 West 22nd Street to be a nuisance for being structurally unsafe, a fire hazard, or otherwise dangerous to human life and health, and ordering the abatement of said nuisance by removal, repair, or demolition of said property and requiring the owner of said property to abate said nuisance by December 2nd, 2021. And as a Scrivener's change, we just want to add in, abate said nuisance by December 2nd, 2021, or submit a viable plan by that date. So open it for motion?
So moved.
Motion, is your second?
Second.
Motion and second. Okay, open for council discussion.
Question, or do we have to amend the motion to say a viable plan or because we? I guess that's for Mr. Rogers, or are we okay with just the verbal? I guess that's for Mr. Rogers, or are we okay with just the verbal statement?
The council can take any action towards abatement. That's in the ordinance. And so if council wishes to allow a plan by that date, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you.
The date being December 2nd still?
That was the only question I had.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Sires.
I drove by the property today. Looks like they're doing quite a bit of work to it. I think whoever is working on it is going to bring it around in the amount of time allotted. The outside cars were all gone. The giant amount of trash that was underneath the back deck was gone. They've made tremendous improvements on the outside. I can't speak for the inside, of course. I just drove by slowly. So I would like to see something happen where whoever is working on it, whether it's the family or whoever, does have a chance to get this done before the city tries to take it over. That's all. This is private property, and I'd like to just see it stay in private hands and not have the city get into the demolition process of a house like this. That's all.
So, and just for clarification's sake, this doesn't mean tearing down the house or that the city takes ownership of it?
Right.
So.
And I would like to clarify, Councilman Sires might be referring to a different property on our agenda tonight, might be referring to either the 1303 Walnut or the West 13th property. We're talking about 1227 West 22nd right now. There were no junk vehicles outside that property.
Isn't that the same one owned by Lloyd Hodge?
No.
Okay, never mind then.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor.
Perhaps it would be helpful if Jamie explained the process here, that if the council declares this as a nuisance, then about how they have the deadline up to December 2nd to present a plan, and what happens if they do and don't submit a plan for repairs? That might be clear for the new people.
Yep, so what we're looking for on all four of these properties is if a plan is submitted, we're looking for a plan that provides us with information with not only what it will take to abate the nuisance, but a timeline, an idea of how long it'll take, what is involved, and a verification that the structure is sound. From that, if that is approved, then we will continue to work with the homeowner and make sure that the process is taken throughout that entire timeline, understanding that changes can happen, but working with the homeowners. If we don't get a viable plan, or we don't see that plan moving forward as it's supposed to, then we would want to either come back here to discuss again, or we would choose to demolish the home. It depends on the level of structural damage and if the owner is working with us or not.
Would, for that decision to demolish, who makes that decision?
With this condemnation here, and it would give us the ability to make that decision, city staff, if that's how it's approved.
So other questions or comments? Seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded to declare the property at 1227 West 22nd Street a nuisance for being structurally unsafe, a fire hazard, or otherwise dangerous to human life and health, and ordering abatement of the nuisance by removal, repair, demolition of said property, and requiring the owner to abate said nuisance by December 2nd, 2021, or submit a viable plan by that date. So motion and second, and it requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass? And moves us over to item six, which is a hearing on the proposed condemnation of property located at 315 East Dunkerton Road. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed tonight?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Castle, if you'd like to take us through that property?
So 315 East Dunkerton Road, this property has been an ongoing nuisance. We had a condemnation inspection on October 14th with the same group as we had with the previous one, in addition to County Health Officer Eric Hynen. Some nuisance history, this process, as I said, has been an ongoing nuisance for debris and exterior storage. It has been cleaned several times by family, friends, and by city staff. In April of 2017, we have our first recorded violation in our current violations. And then September 21st, 2020, a violation notice was sent for excessive garbage and storage. November 20th, we had a second and final notice. And December 21st, the owner was served a citation for the garbage and storage on the exterior. January 21st, the court ordered the owner to abate the nuisance within 15 days. This is for the exterior only, for the citation. The city partially cleaned the property on February 26th. And then on March 1st, due to some things that were noticed on the 26th, we deemed the house as unsafe for occupancy. At that time, we noticed there was no safe entry or exit from the home. On June 23rd, the city cleaned the remainder of the exterior from that citation, and we removed five six-yard dumpsters of debris at that time. The building official continued to check with the property owner, and no progress was made to clear the house. The owner would not allow city staff to enter the buildings at that time. Because of that, on October 14th, we had a condemnation committee inspected by use of an administrative search warrant. Some of the items that we discovered at that time, the first picture on the left, that is the front entrance, we were unable to actually enter the home, even though the warrant allowed us to. The middle is the backyard, and then the other photo is the storage around the garage. A few more photos, the first one is what we could zoom in of the interior of the house, and the others are storage on the property and in the existing outbuildings. The first photo is an entrance into the basement. That was the access to the home, and two additional outbuildings and the storage within those. I did go back today. I've had some pretty constant contact with friends and family that have been helping the owner, and they have done a tremendous job. These pictures show the home. I was actually able to enter it and see that there was a majority of materials removed. But the work isn't done. I still believe that this property should be deemed a nuisance so that we can continue to work with the homeowner to bring it up to a safe condition. Currently, there's no water. The well pump is not working. The water heater needs to be observed and confirm that it's working. And then there's some structural damage to the floors. And then at this time, there is no kitchen. They removed all of the cabinets because they were not in good condition, and so they're working to remodel that. With that, my recommendation is that the city council does declare the property a nuisance, and the city council orders abatement of the nuisance. The nuisance must either be abated or a viable plan of action with detailed schedule for completion be provided to the building official by four o'clock on December 2nd. If this isn't possible, then we'd like to have the ability to move forward with the demolition again of the building, if that, if the viable plan isn't provided.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Castle. Do we have anyone here tonight legally able to represent the property, or the property owner? Yes, ma'am? And just name an address for the record, please, ma'am.
Okay. Hello, my name is Diana Flatt. And I reside at 315 East Dunkerton Road. And I'm here today to ask for one last chance to save my property. And I ask God to find people, what?
Okay.
All right, I'll back up then. Okay. I'm going to find people to come and help. And all my classmates and friends have given up their time and money to come and help to save my house. And this is the only place I plan to be because this is my home. I have sacrificed a lot to keep it. Yeah, so we're working on to have the bathroom redone here in like a few weeks, and having the floors redone. Then we're repainting the house, and my place will look beautiful when we get done. I've gotten help with my problem. I've already improved by getting rid of a lot of my things. We've had 21 dumpsters and five small ones. I feel really good for what we have accomplished. I've changed so much in this last few weeks. I feel proud of myself. And we're working on a timeline for the future. Consider all the hard work that we have really done. Oh, yeah, that too. And I saw the letter for you guys to look at too.
And you're fine. Take your time.
Yeah. Yep, and some of the utilities is working and everything too. So we're, yeah, working on to finish that and get that all up to par too. So. Yeah, okay. Yeah, the well's working and the water heater, yeah, and the water heater is too. It's working now. Okay. Well, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Well, thank you, Ms. Flatt. And you certainly have an outpouring of support from the community. It's been so heartwarming to see your friends and classmates and neighbors come to rally around you in your time of need. And certainly wish you the very best in your home, and look forward to a discussion tonight. It sounds like you have a plan that you're working on very intently. So we're very, very happy to see that for your behalf.
Yeah, I know.
And if you have, are there some things that you'd want to show?
Yeah, like a letter here, yeah, that.
Okay, and you can leave that there, and I'll be able to look at that after the meeting.
All right.
So thank you very much for coming up tonight. It's difficult coming before council sometimes. It's a little intimidating.
Yeah, this is different because a lot more penny people than I thought.
Well, we're all with you.
Okay.
So with that, that's the property owner's comments. So I'll close the public, or close the hearing on this, if you'd like to take your seat again. And that brings us over to part eight, excuse me, six C, which is a resolution declaring the property located at 315 East Dunkerton Road to be a nuisance due to being structurally unsafe, a fire hazard, or otherwise dangerous to human life and health, and ordering abatement of said nuisance by removal, repair, or demolition of said property, and requiring the owner of said property to abate said nuisance by December 2nd, 2021, or submit a viable plan by that date. So is there a motion to approve that item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, and open for council discussion. I would like to ask for the timeframe and what the property owner is doing on their own. I don't actually think I have a question on that. It's just, I'm very happy that that plan is already being worked on. This doesn't, or I guess my question for staff was, if this property were listed as a nuisance, would there be any repercussions to the property owner aside from the fact that it just has heightened scrutiny from the city? Like, is there any kind of a fine, or assessment, or anything like that? Or does it just mean that certain, that it has to be abated or have to have the plan, and that's it?
With it being declared a nuisance, it allows us the opportunity to continue working with the owner. And with that ultimate issue, if we don't see any progress, which I want to say we have seen a lot of progress, but there are a lot more buildings on that property that need to be taken care of. So it allows us to continue working with them without having to go through the citation process and prolonging that and creating more hardship even on the owner through the citation process.
Okay, excellent. Councilor Harding?
So let's say we do declare it a nuisance, and then you work with them, and they get it all cleaned up. At which point in time is it not declared a nuisance anymore, and the city doesn't have the power to demolish? Does that make sense?
Once the abatement is completed, so once they've met our requirements, which would include cleaning out the outbuildings, making sure that the building is sanitary and structurally sound. So I met with the owner today, and we talked about a handful of things that had to be done to the house, in addition to still removing all of the items from the outbuilding. So once that's done, then we would consider it completed and would hope that it would continue to stay that way.
Excellent. Councilor, your question?
Again, Jamie, on this one, the key to it is actually creating the viable, workable plan by December 2nd, submitting a plan. And if they need help in writing that plan or putting that all together, do we have someone that actually will help them kind of coordinate? Or is that something they do on their own?
That is something that they do on their own. However, we've talked quite a bit, I've been out there a couple of times talking about what things we're looking for, what type of timeline we're looking for, just so that they get a general idea of what the city's feeling, so that they understand that whatever plan they submit isn't going to be rejected because we understand what our needs are and what their needs are to make sure it works.
And as they get that plan then submitted and they're working toward it, at some point, if it becomes safe enough to live back in, would that have to go through court order, or does that go through, because it was already done by court order, correct?
The court order was just the exterior. We had not gotten to the home at that point, so it was just clearing the exterior. So this would be really on myself and Chief Boswick. We were the ones who determined it as insanitary and unsafe. And so if both of us agreed that it was, it met current codes, then we would allow her to live in it again with no questions, even if there was still other work to be done.
Sure. Once it got to be a safe condition?
Right now, she doesn't have a kitchen or a functioning bathroom. At least not when I was there earlier today. It sounds like they've done some work since I was there even. So we'd want to make sure that it's heated, it has potable water, it has usable sanitary, and then it has a kitchen.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Sires.
Can we extend this like 60 days instead of having it be December 2nd? Maybe we could have it be March 1st? Or we could have it be February 1st?
And the reason that we have December 2nd is because we want the plan. We understand that the work is not going to be completed by December 2nd. That's to help us come up with how are they going to move forward. We understand that with it becoming winter, it's going to be hard to get some of those things done. But we need to know how they're moving forward, and so that's why we've set the December 2nd date.
But they have done a tremendous amount of work out there so far.
They have.
So other discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, then going to six C. That resolution is declaring the property at 315 East Dunkerton to be a nuisance due to being structurally unsafe, a fire hazard, or otherwise dangerous to human life and health, ordering abatement of said nuisance by removal, repair, or demolition of said property, and requiring the owner of said property to abate said nuisance by December 2nd, 2021, or submit a viable plan by that date. This has been motioned second, and it requires a roll call vote.
No.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so that does pass, and very happy to see the work that's being done already, and look forward to continued success. So thank you very much. That public hearing is closed, or the hearing part is closed, but would council, are you okay with a question? Okay, yes.
Yes, please.
Well, once we get the timeline done for her, where can we turn it to that? Bring it down here, or go to Jamie?
If you can send it to myself, either dropping it off downstairs, or if you want to mail it to myself at City Hall.
That's all I need.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question on that timeline.
Okay.
This is a generational property, family-wise. I mean, you're talking about outbuildings that were built to store things in. I mean, if the garbage and the stuff that is trash is gone, are we looking? I mean, if she has cars, boats?
Certainly.
Things that to her are valuable, whether they're valuable or not, or it's not garbage? Is that a, I mean, you know, we have to look forward to what we're cleaning out of these buildings.
So we would never ask someone to throw away their valuables, their personal belongings. We're looking for the space to be safe. Right now, you can't even enter the building. So if we can remove the trash and the items that can be removed, then the valuables could stay there as storage if it was properly stored.
Why just metaphor valuables? Maybe aren't considered valuable to you, but they're not garbage or health hazards?
And I understand that, yep. I understand there's, everybody has a different definition of what is valuable and what's important to them. So we're just looking to make sure that the space is safe, you can move through the space. Currently, it's stored to almost the ceiling, and you can't open the doors. So we would want to work with you to make sure that it was a... Everything that was stored was stored in a manner that it wouldn't cause harm to anybody in that space.
And so I would certainly recommend, if you have additional questions, Jamie and her staff would be very happy to answer those. We'll probably start to get into technical questions here. So if that's the case, that'll allow her to do some research and get information back to you. But certainly, our goal.
That helps. I mean, you know, we're just. You know, we're just...
Right, and our, our goal...
You can't support a plan. We don't want to give you guys a plan that's not feasible.
Okay, thank you. And our, our goal as a city is, is not to, to just come down on people. Our goal is just the health and safety of, of all citizens and all residents. So as long as that's being met, the, the city's role in it is satisfied. So with that, that takes us over to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to say to you folks, I mean, what a great example of what a community really is. Just seeing the few pictures I saw, it's amazing what you've done already. I know you've got a lot of work to do, but I think the city will work with you as long as you keep moving forward. But congratulations, great job.
So I'll move us over to seven, which is the hearing on proposed condemnation of property located at 710 West 13th Street. And Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed for this item?
I have no written communications on file. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. And everyone's welcome to stay. If you'd like to, to leave after this part of the hearing, you're welcome to, to leave. It's totally fine. So we'll wait a moment for you. And thanks, everyone, again for coming tonight. Okay, so now moving on to item seven. This is the hearing on proposed condemnation of property located at 710 West 13th Street. Madam Clerk already said there were no written communications filed, so I will turn over to Ms. Castle again.
710 West 13th Street condemnation. This is very similar to the last ones. Again, we had a condemnation committee. This one was actually on October 8th. It was the same group plus a few other staff members and council members were there, but this was the official group that were part of the committee. The nuisance history, nuisance complaint started in 2018 based on the records I could find, but there is conversation that it happened sooner than that. In September 2020, the complaints increased. September 15th of 2020, a nuisance notice was sent for junk vehicles and exterior storage. On the 12, April 12th, a second nuisance was sent. On August 30th, city staff responded to a complaint regarding the nuisance and smoke alarm. City staff inspected and found there was no concern of fire, but the nuisance was significant. Myself met, I met with neighbors from 713 West 14th Street who allowed me access to view 710 West 13th. The storage issues were viewable, but the extent of the problem couldn't be determined. On October 6th, the city staff requested a, and received a warrant to investigate the property for health, safety, and nuisance issues. On October 6th, recommendation of Community Development Department and Mayor Green appointed a condemnation committee. And then on October 8th, we inspected the property. Here are some of the images from that inspection. The exterior was very full of junk and debris. The interior had some damage to the floor. We could not find the extent because of the amount of items in the building. The third photo with the fan is actually the second floor. Items were stored to the ceiling. And then this picture to the basement, that was, the stairs were also full. This was, the first pictures going into the sunroom, there was a lot of trash and garbage. A repeat of photo. The fridge had not been opened since the tenant had left the home, and then the kitchen and bathroom were very full of junk. Outside, there was additional storage by the garage. The second floor, while there were pathways, it was very full. There were very narrow pathways. The bedrooms were full and more debris outside. Again, the city is, the staff is asking that city council declare the property a nuisance. City council hopefully will order abatement of the nuisance, and the nuisance must be either completely abated or a viable plan of action with a detailed schedule for completion of the abatement must be submitted to building, to the building official by four o'clock on December 2nd. And then if the owner of record fails to either submit a viable plan or abate the nuisance by December 2nd, the building official is hereby directed to do whatever may be necessary to remove, correct, or abate such nuisance. So this is again, a property that has had some additional work done since I was there. I do not have images, but I do know that the backyard has been almost fully abated. There were seven nuisance cars that had not moved since I started working for the city. Those have all been removed. They have made progress, but I think there's still ways to go. So I'm asking it to still be declared a nuisance so that we can continue to work with this property owner just as we requested on the last property.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Castle. Do we have a legal representative of that property with us tonight to speak? Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Deb Cook and I actually live in Greene, Iowa. I'm the administrator of the Lloyd Hodge Estate. Lloyd was my uncle. We actually, I wasn't appointed until October 15th of this year, so I had no... I had no way to do anything with the properties. He's actually was, has been in Parker Place since 2018. So he hasn't actually been there himself either. We started on October 26th, and my husband and the neighbor have been working diligently to clean the house up for the, we, they've been working basically outside right now before winter hits to make it look presentable again. And, and we plan on working inside, room by room, to get it cleaned up.
Okay. I've, I've seen the, the tremendous improvement on the outside myself. I thank you very much for that. Is there anything else you would want to add for the hearing tonight?
No, no, I, I mean, John and my husband have worked 16 days straight in trying to fix the, fix the problem. So, we'd like, we'd like a chance to at least get it to where it needs to be.
And as the administrator of the property, are you, are you also the owner of it then? Like, do you, do you have the title, or does that belong to someone else? I don't know if Mr. Rogers would answer that, or...
Is it Ms. Coke?
Yes.
Ms. Coke is the legal representative of the estate. The, the ownership of the property is with the estate right now.
Yeah, with, with the, the original owners. It was actually my uncle's house that him and his wife built when they first moved into Cedar Falls, so...
Okay. So, thank you. We will take that under consideration for tonight, and you may take your seat again if you like.
You want me just to stay up here for a second? I got it.
Okay, so with that, then we can close the hearing for it and bring it back to council. And that is, let's see, item eight. Excuse me, seven C, which is a resolution declaring the property located at 710 West 13th Street to be a nuisance due to being structurally unsafe, a fire hazard, or otherwise dangerous to human life and health, and ordering abatement of said nuisance by removal, repair, or demolition of said property, and requiring the owner of said property to abate said nuisance by December 2nd, 2021, or present a viable plan at that time. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. It's open for council discussion and questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselmember Sires.
This is the property I was talking about with Lloyd Hodge. I'm so, I, I'd like everybody to just remember what I said, but I'll repeat myself. They have done a tremendous amount of work there. That house has been in disrepair for, oh, I don't know, 15 or 20 years. But Lloyd was a, was a good fellow. I, I knew him 40 years ago. But my point is, they've worked diligently on the outside. They got, all the cars are gone. All the garbage under the deck, just from what I could see. I think they've pretty well got the outside cleaned up. I'm sure with the work they did on the outside, I'm sure they'll do that on the inside. I think we could, what we did, and, and since it is in an estate, I believe they'll, they'll finish it up. So, I only have good things to say. It looks way better, and I think they've done an excellent job. That's all.
Are there council questions or comments? Counselor Harding?
Wanted to make sure that, or ask a question. Is there, is there any concern in getting a plan in by December 2nd?
Okay. Like, questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Then it's been motioned and seconded to declare the property located at...
Mayor?
Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Counselmember Cruz, please. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm catching parts of this, but what constitutes a viable plan? And if I can hear the answer to that, but then making a motion, as Councilman Sires said earlier, extending that date of December 2nd 60 days to show, or give time to produce a viable plan and show that they're working on it in good faith. If I can make that motion, I'd like to do so.
Well, it'd be an amendment. So if you'd like to, a motion to amend the date from December 2nd to some other date, you're welcome to.
Correct.
So what, what date would you like to motion or amend this to?
60 days.
So December, January, February 2nd? So it's been motioned to extend the date to February 2nd.
Whatever 60 days comes to.
Is that right?
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded, so...
I think Darrell asked a question there, too, as to what constitutes a viable plan that perhaps that would be...
Ms. Castle, if you'd like to answer that.
Just be sure you're close to the mic so he can hear. So, a viable plan is providing us with the information of how they plan to clean out the home and make it sanitary, how they're going to address any potential structural issues. On this house, there was a potential raccoon issue, how they're going to make sure that that doesn't continue to have animals in the home, and then just provide us with a timeline. Will it take 30 days? Will it take three months? So we know an expectation of when the project will be completed.
Ms. Counselor?
Another follow-up question to that. How long should it take someone to write a viable plan?
I felt that giving it to December 2nd would be a legitimate amount of time because they have been in the home for the last 16 days and they see the amount of work that they've done. Now, if they submit something and I have questions, I'm not going to turn it down. I'll have a conversation with them and work with them. So it's just the idea of getting that viable plan in, working together to make sure that it's a plan that we can stick to and work together on.
Okay, other questions coming?
Well, these individuals seem to indicate they would have a plan by the original date anyway. We wouldn't need to extend it, I don't think. Is that right?
Yeah, so they would be prepared to meet that December 2nd date?
They said they would be prepared.
Okay, so the amendment on the floor is to, or actually, was there a second for that?
Yes.
Okay, so there was a second. And so what's on the floor now is just to amend from being December 2nd as the date to February 2nd. If no other discussion on it, then I'll take a, a vote. All in favor of amending, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, that's a definite nay. So we stayed with that December 2nd date. And any other discussion on that main motion? Seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded for that property at West, or 710 West 13th Street to be declared a nuisance, requires a roll call vote.
No.
Five voting aye, two voting nay. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so that is a nuisance declaration, which is really no change for what you're already doing. You already have the work going forward. I thank you very much for, for taking that time to do that. And certainly you can count on the city's support to help with that plan as well, to make sure it meets the needs. So, thank you very much. Moving forward into the next item, we have item eight, which is the hearing on proposed condemnation of property located at 1303 Walnut Street. Is there any written communication filed? Madam Clerk?
I have no written communications on file. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so Ms. Castle, if you want to brief this one as well?
1303 Walnut Street is actually owned by the same... Sorry. 1303 Walnut Street is owned by the same property owner as the previous one, and so it has the same administrator. This property, again, was inspected on October 8th. And it had the same nuisance items. In addition, there was also more junk vehicles on this property. There was some tree issues and continuous noxious weeds complaints on it. So that plus the items that we talked about earlier. So we were at the property on seven, sorry. We were on the property and met with neighbors at 713 West 14th, and at that time, we were able to see the backyard. This backyard is adjacent to the previous condemnation hearing backyard, and so we were able to compare both those items. So we did do an inspection on October 8th, and we were unable to access very much of the home. We did notice a significant amount of damage on the exterior. Were barely able to make it in the front door. Actually had to have assistance in getting that door open due to the storage and the vacancy of the home. So I can't tell you the state of the structure as we weren't very far into it. This is what we were able to see. You'll see some of the vehicles. You'll see the broken soffit and gutter. Additional items outside. There's also a three-stall garage that is part of this property that was packed full, and we were not able to see into that building again because there was so much debris in it. Additional work was done on this property, just like the last one. They have fixed this, or they've removed the soffit, so there's not that danger of that piece hanging down that's been a complaint from numerous citizens. And they have removed all the vehicles, and again, they've worked on the, in the backyard. However, we still would like the property be declared a nuisance for the same reasons as before, so that we're able to continue to work with the homeowner, or the administrator, to get this property cleaned up and to become a safe structure for whomever were to live in it again. So we're asking again with the same dates of December 2nd to submit a viable plan or to finish abating the nuisance. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Castle. Ms. Cook, would you like to speak on this item, or was it covered in the last part?
It's basically covered in the last part.
Okay. And, and I certainly can say, too, from, from driving down Walnut Street, tremendous improvement in that as well. And looking forward to seeing that back, hopefully on the rolls of city houses again that are loved and cherished and lived in. So with that, I'll bring it over to the council and consider the hearing closed. That brings us to eight C, which is resolution declaring the property located at 1303 Walnut Street to be a nuisance due to being structurally unsafe, a fire hazard, or otherwise dangerous to human life and health, and ordering abatement of said nuisance by removal, repair, or demolition of said property, and requiring the owner of said property to abate said nuisance by December 2nd, 2021, or present a viable plan by that date. So is there a motion to...
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, and council discussion and questions? Seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
No.
Five voting aye, two voting nay. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so that does pass, and similar to the other property will be declared a nuisance, but are very encouraged to see the progress on those properties. So, thank you very much. And that closes out our condemnation hearings for tonight. That takes us, if anyone would like to depart, you're welcome to, or you can stay for the rest of our meeting. Give you that option here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us, ma'am. Okay, so item nine is a public hearing on the city's FFY 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAEPER, for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Programs. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
Motion. Second.
Motion and second, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes. And Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed for this item?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So Director Sheets, you have the floor to give us staff comments tonight.
Thank you. Well, we do this once a year where we review the progress that was made on the plan that was set forth the year prior. So the CAEPER is probably something that's familiar to the council, but it's slightly different each year. This is for federal fiscal year '20. In that year, we allocated our funding as follows. About $11,000 to owner-occupied rehab projects, $250,000 to neighborhood infrastructure, which is basically sanitary sewer lining projects that we do. About $40,000 to service agencies, and then about $50,000 toward administrative costs of preparing the reports, going through all the public notices and all the process required with the grants. Also in the CAEPER, we report on our progress with some of the additional funds that have been received as a result of the pandemic. There were two rounds through HUD to entitlement... There were two rounds through HUD to entitlement communities such as Cedar Falls for response and preparedness to the pandemic. And so in the first round, we allocated funding to owner-occupied rehab to ensure that if families are affected by the pandemic with their job, that they're still able to have safe sheltering and make improvements needed in order to have that. And we also allocated a portion of that to service agencies, and that was used primarily by the food bank to offer food to families in need. We also then had another round of CDBG funds. They're called CV, coronavirus funds. And in that, it was for service agencies. We awarded all of it to Operation Threshold for Rent and Mortgage Assistance to families in need. So that is reported on as well in the CAPER. So that, we finished the lining project. The service agencies have utilized all the funding that was provided, and we've made good progress in utilizing the CV funds that have been made available to us. And so that's what's in the report, and we ask that council adopt that report so we can officially submit it to HUD.
Okay, thank you, Director Sheets. So before going to council discussion, does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Any on Zoom?
No one online.
Okay, no one online. So with that, I will consider the public hearing closed on this and bring us back over to item 9E, which is a resolution approving and authorizing submission of the FY 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, open for discussion. Very important outlet or project for low and modern income residents, so thank you very much for the work on this. That very much benefits these people in need. So motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Down to 10 is a public hearing on a proposed ordinance granting a partial property tax exemption for the Vault LLC for construction of an office storage facility at 6100 Production Drive. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so that passes. And Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications for this item?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I'll turn it over to Shane Graham, who will speak about this property and the development agreement in place.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in December of 2019, City Council approved the development agreement with the Vault LLC to build a new building out in the West Viking Road Industrial Park. Part of that agreement, one was to transfer a lot to that company, and then the second part of that agreement was also to provide for the partial property tax exemption, which is before council tonight. The reason that we wait on the ordinance approving the partial property tax exemption is to make sure that the building is either underway or nearly completed before council adopts the tax exemption. So the property is done, the project was completed several weeks ago, and so we're ready to move forward with adopting the tax abatement.
Okay, thank you. And the company of the property, is it Prairie Life Storage?
Yeah, it, yeah, that's the name of the company there. The Vault LLC is the ownership name, right?
All right, so if you happen to be out there, that's what it's called. So with that, does anyone from the public wish to comment on the item? Seeing none here, so none on Zoom?
Nothing on Zoom.
And I will call the public hearing closed then and bring us over to 10E, which is passing an ordinance granting a partial property tax exemption to the Vault LLC for construction of a storage office facility at 6100 Production Drive upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any council discussion? Seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that does pass, but because it's an ordinance, then it'll require three separate readings. So the first reading was tonight, and then over two additional meetings, they'll go through this same vote again in order to have this adopted as an ordinance, so that exemption can occur. So with that, over to item 11. It's a public hearing on the proposed plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Green Hill Road and South Main Intersection Improvement Project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second. Motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass. And Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we have Mr. Ben Claypool tonight, who's going to speak on this item. Mr. Claypool, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This project generally consists of improvements to the South Main Street and Green Hill Road intersection in the form of a newly constructed roundabout in place of the existing traffic signal. This will include 10,555 square yards of new pavement, 350 square yards of new sidewalk and trail, 1,156 feet of storm sewer, 1340 feet of water main, retaining wall and fencing, landscaping, and roadway lighting. The total estimated cost for the construction of this project is $3,347,400, and the project will be funded utilizing general obligation funds, local option sales tax, and Cedar Falls Utilities funding sources, and a $500,000 Traffic Safety Improvement Program grant from the DOT. Our design consultant, Shive Hattery, has prepared a brief four-minute video that played at our public information meeting on this project. We have it queued up to play for you here tonight, and I will let cable TV start it whenever they are ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claypool.
As our community has evolved, so has its infrastructure. Today, we feature our next evolution, the roundabout at Green Hill Road and South Main Street. The reason why we needed to look at alternatives to the existing signalized intersection is one word: growth. While growth and development are key to a city's vitality, concerns arose regarding the unfortunate accompanying rise in increased traffic, congestion, and accidents. City governance authorized the Green Hill Road Corridor Study, completed in 2018, to review traffic flow and safety. After weighing pros and cons of each alternative, the city of Cedar Falls determined that the best solution to this problem is a multi-lane roundabout at Green Hill Road and South Main Street. The roundabout will have a dual-lane approach on Green Hill Road with single approach lanes on South Main. Additionally, the southbound approach will have a dedicated right-turn lane. Viewed from above, you can see that there are additions to the intersection: the central island, splitter islands, and the right-turn lane. Existing sidewalks and trails will be replaced exactly where they are now, shown here by this new retaining wall. Contrasting colored paint in the crosswalks will alert drivers to pedestrians, and median refuge areas allow them to cross one direction of traffic at a time, which will ensure pedestrian safety. The brick island surround provides extra width for oversized and emergency vehicles. And screen walls will be replaced with new materials to provide both a visual and sound block from intersection traffic to those who reside and work near it. There will be relocation of some utilities and conduit from light poles, which will be installed for future cameras to the IT network. In addition to the function of the roundabout, there is a visual benefit in the form of it. The roundabout gives the opportunity for both hardscape and landscape enhancements to the intersection. The central island and splitter islands will provide green opportunities and a more pleasing space for all users of the intersection. How all this benefits our community is best summed up by the findings from the Iowa Department of Transportation on roundabouts like the one designed, which can provide 90% reduction in fatal crashes, 76% reduction in injury crashes, 30% to 40% reduction in pedestrian crashes, 10% reduction in bicycle crashes, not to mention reduced air pollution and vehicle speeds, fewer vehicle delays, and lower long-term maintenance costs. Leading this project, the city of Cedar Falls Public Works Department and Shive Hattery Design Team strive to minimize disruption to our residents and business owners while adhering to the following timeline. Utility relocation is scheduled to begin in March 2021. The project will be sent out for bid in December 2021, with roadway construction starting in the spring of 2022. The expected completion date for the majority of the work is fall of 2022. This timeline will be updated and made public during each phase through completion on the project website. If you have questions, concerns, and comments regarding this project, use the Contact Us page. The Roundabout at Green Hill Road and South Main Street, part of the continuing evolution of Cedar Falls.
Mr. Claypool, do you have anything else you'd want to add for us?
No.
Okay, so with that, I will move us over into public comments. And anyone is welcome to come forward and speak on the item. I know Ms. Pop had some slides you wanted to have added on, and I did approve those. So if you'd like to come forward first, just name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, council-elect. My name is Penny Pop. I live at 4805 South Main. You know, sometimes it's easier to look at the past to appreciate where we're going as a city. Denny, if you're ready with the first slide? Not so long ago, this was the view facing east towards Green Hill Road from the future intersection of Highway 58. Next, please? This was the south-facing view of the future Green Hill Road from Spruce Hill Drive. And yes, that's the Round Barn at Western Home. Next, please? This was the north-facing view of South Main, looking north from Balboa Avenue, where our public safety building is now. It's kind of interesting to look back. Since 1985, when these photos were taken, folks bought homes in this neighborhood. They raised their families. They invested and improved their properties. I know you can envision the intersection at Green Hill and Main as it looks today: the abundant tree canopy on Main Street north of Green Hill, the weathered fencing on the south showing its age, shielding backyards from the noise of the busy street. Row upon row of homes sprouting up to the east and the south, even a business or two. And for the future, what will our neighborhood be like in 40 years from now? And what will we need? This is what is being planned for today, just like they did in the 80s and 90s, planning for growth over time. I do want to mention our neighbors, our neighbors on the southwest corner, the northwest corner, and the northeast corner. The process of reconstruction has taken years. They have sacrificed parts of their property for the greater good. We owe them more than monetary compensation. We owe them a huge thank you for the time and the effort they have spent making this project a reality. I have often wondered if the city should establish a citizen advocacy group to help homeowners walk through the effects of road construction. So the next time you're sitting at the stoplight at Green Hill and Main, take a minute and look around. It's a great neighborhood. In a few short years, everybody will be buzzing by. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pop. Does anyone else from the gallery wish to speak on this item? And seeing none, and we have none on Zoom. Yes, Mr. Wykoff, please, name and address for the record.
Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road. Great city of Cedar Falls still. Okay, here we go again. More costs, more expenditure for replacing an intersection that's already built. I think I need to know how many people have been killed at this intersection? Because as your slides pointed out, roundabouts prevent deaths. Okay, that's a good point, but how many people have been killed? I don't think anybody's been killed at that intersection. Maybe there's been a few accidents, nothing significant. So I think we should park this. There's just, we've already got a roundabout being installed at Cedar Heights and Green Hill Road. Like I told one of the councilmen, I think we need to have a moratorium on roundabouts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff. From Public Works or from Public Safety, do we have any data on fatalities on that intersection?
I would have that data. I don't have it in front of me tonight. That is all information that has been previously brought forward to council, so...
Okay, thank you. Would anyone, or anyone else from public comment? Yes, sir.
James Geiger, 5308 Arbor's Drive. I love roundabouts, but at the controlled intersections, we have strobes to alert traffic that we have emergency response vehicles. Can't we have strobes mounted in the centers of these roundabouts to alert traffic of oncoming emergency response vehicles?
Okay, thank you.
That would be great, especially with the fire department and police department right down the street there. That's a very busy intersection.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Geiger. From Public Safety, are we aware of any other roundabouts elsewhere constructed in the country where they use strobes or special lights for roundabouts as vehicles pass through?
Yeah, I have not heard of such. I'm sure from a technological standpoint, that's possible, but the speeds at roundabouts are fairly low, and we haven't had incidents occur at roundabouts that would probably warrant something like that.
But certainly could do that if it became necessary.
I'm sure it's possible, yeah.
Any comments on, actually, I'll wait until we get to public comment part or council comment, so...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm, obviously, I didn't put that presentation together, but those appear to be nationwide-type statistics for roundabouts. The significant number of deaths and injuries and things are nationwide statistics. And years ago, when we did the roundabouts or the first phase of University Avenue, we conducted a similar study for Cedar Falls, pre-construction and after the roundabouts, and that section was fully opened, and we found a reduction in injury accidents and accidents overall.
Thank you. So with that, does anyone else from the gallery wish to speak on the item tonight? Yeah, I'm seeing none, so I will consider the public hearing closed and bring us over into council comments. So for council, I'll open it up for discussion and questions to staff. I'll start us off with the fire engines getting through the signalized intersections. For Director Olson, what's been the response been like from the drivers? Are they, any complaints or concerns for the engine drivers getting through roundabouts?
So we have the traffic preemption devices that the gentleman mentioned. Those are extremely beneficial for us. So when the emergency vehicles are approaching, the traffic signal picks up the fact that they're approaching through a signal that's sent to the traffic signal, and it changes to a green light for the emergency vehicle. So they're very beneficial. We've had that technology for a number of years now, and it's made a significant improvement in our ability to get through an intersection more safely, and also helps with that stacking effect when you have a lot of vehicles stopped at red lights, particularly in divided highways, where you just have to either wait out the light or hope they, they open up a section of road for you.
Okay, and then how about for the traffic or the vehicles getting through the roundabout, like a large fire engine or the aerial? Any complaints or concerns for this design of getting through it?
Oh, no, we can maneuver, we can maneuver roundabouts quite easily.
Okay. All right, so council, Councilwoman Harding?
I didn't, I don't remember. Are we in a motion for the resolution? Did we make the motion?
Oh, that's a good point.
No.
Okay, so happy to do that. Good, good point. So that's item 11E, a resolution approving and adopting the planned specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Green Hill Road and South Main Intersection Improvement Project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and seconded, okay, now open. Thank you very much for the catch.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Cyrus?
I have a question. Does this $3,347,400...
Does this $3,347,400, does that include moving the big utility pole and moving all the utilities? Whoever spoke?
I could probably address that, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly.
Oh. So the utility costs for CFU to do the underground electric are not included in the bid documents.
Okay. Because I'd heard that it would be a half million dollars to move that one pole that's in the southwest corner.
I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but that generally sounds in the range of what the electrical overhead underground was going to be.
I'd just like to finish up. I know I'm going to be in the minority on this. I would like to see it stay with a couple extra turning lanes and with the less disruption. But yeah, roundabouts are fine, but not everywhere. I think this would be a better spot to have a couple extra lanes, but that's just my opinion. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Sires. Other discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. Then it's been motion and seconded for approving and adopting the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost for the Green Hill Road and South Main intersection improvement project. Requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass and moves the project forward. Next steps from Director Shragi, what would we look to see next on this item?
Well, we'll have a bid letting here coming up, and then the next item on the agenda will be accepting the low bid and then moving forward with a contract before council with the low bid contractor.
Okay. Thank you. So moving over to old business, we have item 12, which is passing ordinance 2997, adopting by reference the 2021 International Building Code, 2021 International Residential Code, 2021 International Mechanical Code, 2021 Uniform Plumbing Code, 2021 National Fuel Gas Code, and 2020 National Electrical Code and associated revisions to Chapter 7 Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and seconded, open for council discussion. Seeing none. Does anyone from the gallery wish to discuss? Questions? Okay. So with that, it's been motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Over to 13, passing ordinance 2998, adopting by reference the 2021 International Fire Code and associated revisions to Chapter 9 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and any discussion? Any comments from gallery? Seeing none, then motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Over to new business, we have our consent calendar, where the following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does council wish to pull any item 14 through 17? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item 14 through 17 for separate discussion? Seeing none. Then I will read those items. 14 is approving the recommendation of the mayor relative to appointment of members to boards and commissions. 15 is a receiving and filing of communication to the Civil Service Commission for the certified list for a position of public safety officer. 16 is receiving and filing the FY 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And I'll just note our great thanks to our financial staff for that preparation. And 17 is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
That passes, and so we can move over to the resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item from 18 through 40?
36, please, Mayor.
36. Okay, so we'll pull 36. Any other items from council? Any from the public? Okay, seeing none. Then I will brief, gosh. I am not going to read all these items. So it's in the list. If you want to see them, it'd be a lot. So I'll make, unless council really wants me to, then I will be glad to do it. Okay, seeing a lot of no's there. So with that, those items require a motion. Is there a motion to approve the items minus 36?
Motion to approve the items minus number 36.
Second.
Motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It just saved us about 40 minutes of this meeting. Item 36 was a resolution approving the preliminary plat of West Fork Crossing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and seconded. Councilmember Miller, you had some questions or comments?
So for staff update on it.
Okay.
Got a couple questions following that.
Yes, this is a preliminary plat for West Fork Crossing. As you saw in the staff report, significant single-family subdivision that's west of the new high school site, north of West 27th Street and east of Union Road. This is, we do have a phasing plan for this development. I know that's been a, critical street connections have been a concern. And so as you recall, we had amendments to the subdivision code recently to ensure that we have the right to ask for a phasing plan during preliminary plat. One has been provided for this subdivision. The area to the south, one of the significant things in the staff report you'll notice is that the area to the south is zoned agriculture, so it's not ripe for plating at this time to a single family. But we want to make sure that those critical street connections to the south to connect to West 27th Street are done in a timely fashion. So that is part of this phasing plan because the land to the south is currently owned by the developer of this property. And I would certainly be happy to answer any other questions that you have about it.
So Ms. Howard, can you just briefly talk about the plan for construction in that area for vehicles in and out?
Right, that is another concern that was expressed about how the construction traffic would happen, because this is shown as six different phases. The first three phases would have to be, construction traffic would have to come from Union Road. And then later subdivision, later phases would have to also come from West 27th Street. So temporary construction access point for phases three, four, five, and six would then need to come from West 27th Street. That keeps the traffic away from already developed neighborhoods.
So there'd be no construction vehicles in from like the Lexington Heights connection?
Right, that is the idea behind that. It's the major construction vehicles. Now, of course, you know, pickup trucks and that sort of thing where, you know, contractors are coming, those are not of particular concern, but when they're major vehicles for construction, keeping that traffic coming from the major roadways surrounding the development versus going through the neighborhoods is the point.
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Howard. Any other questions or comments from council? Councilor DeBir?
I thought that was part of the, when we redid some of the ordinances, was that we would have a complete roadway network. And here I see on this one, the only way in and out is off Union Road. And so if the south part's not ever completed, they'd never connect off West 27th Street, which means the entire development would have just that one access off Union Road.
So to address that particular concern, because staff also had that concern as well, what this does in the phasing plan is basically notice, the phasing plan, construction of the extension of Vale Avenue, which is the extension of the street to the south toward West 27th Street, that would have to be completed all the way to West 27th Street prior to approval of any of the phases four, five, and six. So basically, fully about half of this land couldn't be developed until that street was constructed to the south.
So you're saying phase one, two, and three does not have to have a complete network?
Right. So the traffic study that was done shows that the adequate street connections would be made to Union Avenue would be enough to support those phases. In the third phase, that temporary construction access easement would have to be constructed down to West 27th Street to provide that construction traffic. And then prior to any plating of four, five, and six, the complete street would need to be constructed all the way to 27th Street. And then another thing to note is the council, of course, has the power at final plating to require any additional conditions that you need to approve a final plat. And one, one idea would be to have them dedicate an easement for the location of where that roadway would go, so that we'd have at least some notion of where that would be at the final plat of the first phase down to 27th Street.
Well, in this first phase, approximately how many lots are you talking about that would have only the one access to Union Road?
So it'd be 64 lots. And there'd be two ways in and out, because of course, traffic can go through Lexington Heights neighborhood up to the north and then could go west to Union Road. So that would be a full connection that would provide two ways in and out of this neighborhood.
But that 64 lots is just this little bit here. That doesn't include the number of lots in the middle here, right?
Right.
And so that middle part is phase what?
Right. So all the other phases, that's the other thing to note, that's a little bit unusual about this preliminary plat, is phases two, three, four, five, and six only have outlots for future development. So those all have to go through another preliminary plating exercise and a final plating. So there'll be multiple opportunities for each one of those phases to have a discussion about how things are going and any additional conditions that need to be addressed at that time.
Yes, Councilmember Miller.
The outlots was partial, partially what my question was, is how that plays into the phasing side of it. Can you explain a little bit more of that? I mean, I don't know that I'm all that familiar with seeing outlots in this type of a fashion.
Yes, it is quite unusual. This was the desire of the applicant to leave these outlots for future development. That means that these are not buildable lots. So every phase of this development will have to go through another preliminary plat phase and a final plat phase in order to make buildable lots. So then they'd have to come in with that preliminary plat and show the lot lines for all the buildable lots in those phases. I do note that the applicant's representative is here tonight, too, if you have any questions of them and why they've done it the way they have.
My main concern is that you guys are comfortable with how this is being presented in this fashion to get the roadways built when they need to be built. And if staff is comfortable with that, then I feel better about it, I guess.
I know we've had quite a bit of discussion about this, and I think with the changes to the subdivision code that were put in place last year, I feel that we have a lot more confidence that there's a lot of checks and balances here to ensure that that does occur.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the item? Seeing none. Then it's been motioned and seconded to approve the preliminary plat of West Fork Crossing and requires a roll call vote. Excuse me. Yeah, roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So that takes us over to ordinances, which item 41 is passing an ordinance amending Chapter 24 Utilities of the Code of Ordinances relative to sanitary sewer rates upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Open it for council discussion and questions. Any from the public? Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Then it's been motion and seconded to pass the ordinance amending Chapter 24 Utilities of the Code of Ordinances relative to sanitary sewer rates upon its first consideration and requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Over to item 42, this is allowing bills and claims for November 15th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and seconded. Any council discussion or questions? Any from the public? Seeing none. Then it's been motion and seconded, allow bills and claims for November 15th and requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any council referrals tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Sires.
I've been talking with Jen Stevenson. She's with the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. I think it'd be good, I know that we're working with them a little bit now, but she told me about the programs that they have where we can get social workers right out with our PSOs. And they also work with Waterloo Police to do the same thing. We could have three trained responders, masters and bachelor level to partner with health crisis calls. And these would be embedded with the responders and able to do what we would appreciate is an opportunity to share with us when I talked with her. And this is, we're doing some cross-training with our, with our police officers right now. But I'd like to put time to have Jenny Stevenson come in here and talk with us, because I think this is a real positive thing we could do with the social workers, where our police officers don't have to worry quite so much that they're doing the right thing with these social-type situations as social workers will, whether it's suicide hotline or, you know, these, these different, when the law is not broken, we would have somebody right there with them. Waterloo's been doing, doing this, and it costs them about $150,000 a year. And since we've gotten the money from COVID relief, six and a half million, and I know we applied that to the wastewater plant, I would like to see the council look into this program so we could truly have some social workers that went out and could take care of other situations that weren't absolutely breaking law. So I'd like to set up the time to have the Certified Community Behavior Health Clinic come and have a presentation with the city council members so we could kind of get that ball rolling. I know some of us have talked about it. I know Kelly's talked about it and Frank, and I think this would be a great thing.
So it's been motioned, then?
Yeah.
Or a presentation in?
Yes.
A presentation in either committee of the whole or a work session?
Second.
Okay. So motion seconded, open for council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
Obviously, I'm all for this, but I do believe, I think this is the Elevate group, right?
Yeah.
Okay, don't we do some, isn't Elevate available to us?
They are.
I just want to know what would be, what would change, because I know, aren't they available on call now?
So I'll turn it over to Chief Birdy to answer that.
Yeah, so we do training with Elevate, and we work with Elevate. So the services that Councilman Sires was speaking about, we already do. We don't have the, we don't have them embedded with us, though. And Waterloo did do a grant, they did a separate grant, I think it was closer to half million, and they do have that, so.
So with that embedded nature, is it that they respond to, Elevate responds to 911 calls?
Well, Elevate now, we can contact them, and they respond to the call within 20 or 30 minutes. You know, if you have them embedded, of course, you're playing the odds that you'll have a mental health counselor working at the same time you have a call, so. So we're all for it. We're, you know, but there's a cost to it, so. But we already work with Elevate, we already work with these people, we already train with them.
Okay. So for that present, I certainly see the value of a presentation with Ms. Stevenson. I've been able to tour the facilities and have seen the program at work, and I think it'd be a good thing for us to consider as well. With that said, could it, would council be willing to go entertain a, I guess it wouldn't be a committee of the whole presentation, but more just a work session, really a formal work session to find out what they offer and hear from them?
Right. If we, if we could have it, it, committee of the whole, then we could vote on it and move forward on it at that time. I think it's a great program, and Waterloo's been using it, and it's good to train our police officers, no doubt. But these people, this is all they deal with, and it would be the next step above what we're doing now. And I think it'd be a good, good way to start, and we'd try it for a year or whatever it was, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and I would say, yeah, we work with them already. This would be if we want to go the next step to enhance what we're already doing, so.
Right.
Okay. So with that, if I then understand the motion correctly, it would be to have committee of the whole presentation with Ms. Stevenson and connecting with the Cedar Falls Public Safety Department in that same presentation, to hear what services are available and to have a motion for how to move forward.
Right.
Okay. So any others, any other discussion on that before a vote? Okay, so do I understand the motion, then? Anybody need it rephrased? Okay, so. Okay, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so I see a unanimous passing for that, so we will plan that for a committee of the whole presentation, and we'll reach out to Ms. Stevenson to, to provide that. And also, there might be value too in taking a tour of their facility as well. So we'll see what works out well for us to do that. So with that, any other, yes, Councilmember Cruz?
Thank you. A while back, there was a concern about the speed limit on Union Road, and subsequently they did a study, and from that, they determined that the speed limit would stay at 45. But since then, I've had a number of concerns brought to me about the lack of official crosswalks on Union Road. And with the large amount of development that's taken place in the last few years and continued development, I'd like to have a discussion whether we do it at goal setting or to determine if we need the CIP entry, to look at the crosswalks of some sort officially being implemented at Paddington, Thresher, and Autumn Ridge Road, essentially from First Street to 12th Street. I know there's ability to do signage, but if we don't have the striping and we don't have the handicap ramp to go to the sidewalk, it's not proper or generally we don't do that because that brings on liability. So I'd like to make a motion to explore the process we'd like to pursue if it's needed at goal setting for the dollar amounts to, to do a formal study, and maybe even go the full length of Union Road to 27th now that we've got a bike trail being completed from 12th to 27th. So a lot of people come across Union Road to use the nice bike trail, recreation trail, so I'd like to take a look at that.
Okay, so there's motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, open it for additional council discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Sires.
There are quite a bit of concerns about crossing right there where he was talking about. We've done, I think Chase could elaborate, hasn't there been a speed study done on Union Road there? So it would be nice to get a flashing line of crossing sign up there where he's talking about on Paddington.
So that, so that, it sounds like the, the motion on the floor is to discuss whether or not to do this at goal setting or some other venue? I certainly, I, I think it'd be appropriate to have it as a, a goal setting discussion.
If I could make a couple of comments, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jason.
So we, we did do the speed study, we provided some, some data on that. I know there has been some discussion on a crosswalk at the intersection of Paddington. There are pedestrian ramps that, that do cross there. I know staff, we've been looking at, you'll see as our draft CIP develops, there are some infill locations on what I'm going to call the, the west side of, of Union Road in anticipation of the new Autumn Ridge developments that continue north toward West First Street or Highway 57. And part of that draft CIP item also includes upgraded pedestrian amenities and, and safety items as relates to that crossing. So we are well aware of it, we have it on our docket for kind of a pedestrian study to, to see the use, but obviously, this late in the year, being with the temps that we have, we don't get a lot of pedestrian use, so we wanna be sure to, part of that study includes good weather next spring when we look at it, but it is on our radar and you'll see it come through the draft CIP as well.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor as it, as it stands is having the discussion, is it, did you specify it, goal setting, Councilmember Cruz?
I caught some of that. If it's on the CIP already, it sounded like from the bits and pieces I heard, I would like something as formal as possible to get something on Paddington because I'm told with the families of the young children, they cross pretty regularly to go to the elementary school in the mornings and evenings, so. If we can get one of these done at minimum as soon as possible, because there is no official crosswalk there, and I was told there was a near collision with the mother and a baby carriage, and the car can zing and through, didn't stop because, and stopped then and yelled back at the pedestrian, said that, I don't have to stop, there's no official crosswalk there. So whatever we can do to, to enhance safety for the pedestrians crossing, I'd be all for it, whatever speed we can do it at.
Councilmember Harding?
Well, originally, I heard him say, talk about it at goal setting, so let's just make it an up, let's just take the referral for, let's talk about it at a goal setting, get an update from staff and see where we're at. I think what he's saying is very valid, but that's probably the most logical place to get an update from staff and see, they've, seems like they've already done some work on it, so my vote is let's, let's talk about it at goal setting.
Okay, so we do have that as a, a motion for a, as a goal setting topic. It's been seconded, and if no other discussion on that, then all in favor of having this as a goal setting topic with detailed info from staff, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so thank you, Councilmember Cruz, we will include that in with goal setting. And we're working on that right now as, anyway, so it's a great time to bring that forward. So any other council referrals for tonight? Seeing none, then any staff updates, Mr. Gaines?
No staff updates, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I did have an opportunity to look at the city ordinance in reference to Mr. Wykoff's pedestrian question, and the ordinance states that if there is a sidewalk, you cannot walk on the street. If there is not a sidewalk, then you may walk on the street. So it depends on whether a sidewalk is readily available or not. That's in our city ordinance.
Appreciate that update. Just as a quick update, I'll, I'll note successfully that astronaut Raj Ashari lifted off last week and is now aboard the International Space Station with the other four members of Crew Three, and will be onboard for six months. Looking forward to a safe return from him and hope to be able to connect with him while he's onboard the International Space Station so we can tell Cedar Falls what their first astronaut is doing. So that'll, stay tuned for that. If no other staff updates, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. The motion?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.